...meeting. We're looking for approval of August tenth and August thirtieth minutes. Do I have a motion? Those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And do I have a second?
Second.
We have first and a second approved for the minutes for the last two meetings. I guess we don't have, Tom is not here tonight for the liaison report. Okay.
He should, he should take a vote on the minutes.
Okay. Can we get a vote on the minutes, I guess? Yes.
Aye.
Your name?
Aye.
Okay. Motion's approved. Okay, open forum. I'm new at this tonight, so. Basically.
Anybody who wants to go up?
Okay. Anybody has any concerns or questions that wants to come forward tonight before we proceed on? Okay. We're having a public hearing, variance application for David and Diane Doll. Three twenty-seven zero seven Timberlane Point in Breezy Point. They're looking to construct a thirty forty by forty accessory structure. And we're opening up the public hearing. I guess we're looking for the applicant's presentation. If you want to step forward and state your names and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Diane Doll and this is my husband Dave. We have owned our cabin at three two seven oh seven Timberlane Point since two thousand one. It was used at that time as a small guest cabin by the owners. We remodeled it in two thousand ten when we knew we would be retiring and spending about four months a year here during the summer. We stayed, when we remodeled, we stayed within the footprint of the cabin and the character of the neighborhood. At that time, we owned one lot, which was about ninety feet of lake shore. In two thousand fourteen, we were able to purchase the adjacent lot, adding another ninety feet of lake shore. We have now combined the two lots into one. And we are here tonight to ask for your permission to build a thirty by forty foot garage with guest quarters on that lot. We are looking for protection from the elements for our cars. Storage for items in the winter and overflow room for guests as our family grows. We were blessed with our first grandbaby this summer, and I can share pictures at the end of the meeting if you. Living on Timberlane Point, as you all know, we're working with a very narrow envelope. We're on a peninsula. And we want very much for the garage to fit in and be consistent with the adjacent properties in our neighborhood. To that end, we worked diligently with Von Larson, who is the architect and owner of North House Residential Design, to design a plan that we feel accomplished that. It's not obtrusive, but it does accomplish what, the goals that we are trying to complete here. We're asking the board's permission for a lakeside non-compliance setback for the building, which would be at sixty-four feet to accommodate the deck on the one end of the garage. The garage would be set back seventy feet from the lake. And this would allow approximately ten feet from the road to enter the garage. Our cabin itself, you know, was grandfathered in, it was built in the sixties. It's set back only fifty feet from the lake. So the garage would be set back from that. And with our architect's recommendation, we feel that the positioning thirty feet by forty feet going towards the lake would fit in. It would be attractive from the lakeside, but as I said, not obtrusive. And it would really fit in well with the adjacent neighboring properties and including our cabin. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we're opening the questions for the staff. Is there a total of three lots there or was there three at one time, so was?
There is another lot next to us that our neighbor owns.
Okay, so you're just lot twenty-one and twenty-two, which is combined as one. Okay. Okay. Jerry, you have yours.
There's another one on the backside of one of these pages that, this one, that's the one that they asked for.
Variance request twenty-two zero zero four, applicant David and Diane Doll. Legal description, lots twenty-one, twenty-two Trottercade. Address three two seven oh seven Timberlane Point, Breezy Point, Minnesota. Zoning of the property is medium density residential, R two, unsord. The applicable codes are one fifty-three point zero zero six, one fifty-three point zero three two, one fifty-three point one two zero, one fifty-three zero four four, one fifty-three zero nine six, one fifty-three zero four five, and one fifty-three one zero four. Their request is to construct a thirty by forty garage with a second story guest house. Fifty-seven point seven feet, fifty-seven seven, fifty-seven feet, seven inches from the OHW. Garage fifty-five feet from the OHW for the upper deck. The property is located near the end of Timberlane Point. It is lake shore property in Lake Oslo, Onamaca. This section of Timberlane Point was vacated in nineteen eighty-four. Property is assessed from a private drive easement that services this property and some adjacent properties. Lots twenty-one and twenty-two are consolidated. The total area of the lots is about twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-six square feet. Variance was improved to increase the existing house height and add on to the non-conforming structure and place in addition to the existing non-conforming structure. At the time of the variance, lots twenty-one and twenty-two were individual lots. Lot twenty-two was the, the lot that the variance specifically addressed in earlier times. In two thousand seventeen, the city of Breezy Point adopted a floodplain ordinance. A portion of this property is located within a flood zone. The Dolls are requesting a variance to construct a thirty by forty garage with a second story guest quarters. The property, normal setbacks, lot size requirements, twenty thousand square feet. It does meet the minimum size for a building. Ordinary high water mark setback is seventy-five feet. Side yard setback, ten on one side, fifteen on the other. Impervious coverage, twenty-five percent. And the height is limited to twenty-five feet if the guest quarters is part on the second story of a garage or an accessory structure. A variance is a legally permitted deviation is provided by MS four sixty-two point three five seven subdivision six, as it may be amended from time to time from the provisions of this chapter as deemed necessary by the Board of Adjustment when the strict interpretation of the ordinance would create practical difficulty and be impractical because of circumstances relating to lot size, shape, topography, or other characteristics of the property. And when the deviation from the ordinance with the attached conditions will still be in keeping with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Variances cannot create a land use that is not permitted in the zone. Variances shall be decided within a reasonable time with consideration for the following. The strict interpretation of the ordinance would be impractical because of circumstances relating to lot size, shape, topography, or other characteristics of the property not created by the landowner. The deviation from the ordinance with an attached condition will still be in keeping with the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. Land use created by the variance is permitted in the zoning district. The variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. And the variance is not for economic reasons alone, but reasonable use of the property does not exist under the ordinance. The applicant contends that the practical difficulty is, and that I believe that is up to the applicant. And if you're dealing with it, you will have to specify what that practical difficulty is. Part of the proposed garage is located in the A one flood zone. The impervious coverage is proposed to be twenty-two percent. The survey indicates that a building envelope does exist. Proposed garage protrudes out of the building envelope. Rotating the proposed garage ninety percent would maximize the OHW setback and minimize a portion of the garage in the, in the zone A, or the flood zone. The use is consistent with residential uses in the neighbor, in the neighborhood and in the area. The following may be used to support denial of the variance request. The planning commissioner, the board adjustment finds that no practical difficulty exists and the accessories building can be built within a building envelope that would minimize encroachment into zone A and the lake shore. The property, the following may be used to support approval of the variance request. The property pre-exits subdivision and zoning regulations. The impervious coverage does not exceed twenty-five percent. The practical difficulty is again up to the applicant to provide. And the approved, if approved, the following may be conditions of approval. Minimum elevation of ten twelve for the first floor. Or twelve, ten, I'm sorry. The elevation and building setback from the OHW to be set and staked by the registered surveyor. Given the increased height and close proximity of the building to the lake and the roadway gutters shall be placed on the building with downspouts being directed as to displace the waterway from the lake and the road. Building permit to be obtained, building to conform to Minnesota State Building Code, and work with soil and water to develop landscape and planting plan for rain gardens and screening from the lake shore. The planning commissioner, the board of review may by resolution choose to approve, deny, or modify the requested variance. The resolution should clearly state the reasons for approval, denial, or modifications of the variance.
Thank you, Jerry. Any questions?
I, I wonder if the applicant could explain what you consider to be the practical difficulty.
Define practical difficulty for me.
Jerry.
I actually give a sheet to every individual that applies for a, a variance that kind of explains a practical difficulty. But it's, a practical difficulty is something that is related to the, the property itself. It's not something that is made, or it's not a, a want or a wish. It's basically, how can I use this property in a reasonable manner? And I should not have to live with the zoning regulations because of the practical difficulty of the property. Now, that, in most cases, that's topography. You know, and in a lot of cases, it's a, a small lot. I, I think. Everybody has a different interpretation. But I don't think it's up to the city or the city staff to provide the practical difficulty for the applicant. I think the applicant has to convince you that that, what the practical difficulty is.
Would, would you mind coming up to the podium?
The practical difficulty, I think it's hard to define. In our view, what we're asking for fits the lot the best. Stonemark did come back with, to the survey, and they provided to Jerry and I. And they had the building at seventy feet from the lake. With the deck, it was sixty-four feet from the lake. That is what Diane suggested in her little speech. That seemed, and our architect came out to the lot and said, "I think this fits the lot so much better than turning it this way." And so that's, we think it's practical. And that's really, I guess, yeah. And with the way we had Cindy at Stonemark do the last survey, we're at seventy feet. We're just not asking all that much of a variance.
You're seventy or fifty-seven?
Previously, we, Jerry and I had talked, I had our architect put it on the survey. It'd end up, I said, "Put it even with the house." Well, that, we, Jerry saw that and said, "Well, that's fifty-seven feet." So then we went back to Stonemark and she put it on at seventy feet. But with the deck included, the six-foot deck, it's sixty-four, the way we would like to have it on.
So we're not looking at the right plant?
No, you're not looking at the most recent one provided by Stonemark.
So how did she fit that in? Pull it towards the road?
I've got it on my computer if you want to see it.
I mean, to me, a third of this is in the floodplain right now. And a third of it's out of the building envelope, correct? Jerry? Oh.
He can set it up there.
Yeah, if you put it on the DAS, Deb can use the document camera, it can go on the TV. Right in the middle. Yeah, right in the middle on the, right there. And then Deb, if you can turn on the document camera.
Then maybe enlarge it a little bit?
Change it in just a second. Okay.
This is the same what we have.
Yep, yep, so then, yep, you just move it. And then if I, if you, is there a way you can enlarge it on, there we go.
On your?
On your screen, is there a way?
You can.
Now just move it up, yep. So now just here.
So where's the septic in the well?
It would be off to the, to the right, yeah, to the right of, of the building. We have, we have room from the well for the house. It'll be seventy-five feet to the new septic, which I believe is called.
So in this drawing, they, they have it turned a little bit then? Is it?
Well, this is the way our, the building plan also in your packet. This is the way it would sit. It's proposed sitting just like this on there.
Because I think the other picture was sitting square with the road, wasn't it? I don't know if that matters, but.
The other one, they turned it ninety degrees.
Right.
Yeah, so just as a.
It'd be forty wide by thirty deep. This is thirty wide by forty deep.
Just as a clarification, so the first in, in your, in your, in your packet, the first survey that's in there, that was the first survey that they submitted, that Mr. Doll was referring to.
Correct.
And then they had the second one come where they felt like it aligned better, but then that was fifty-seven feet. And now we have this one. This is third, this is the third iteration.
And it's seventy feet now?
Right, yeah, and that's seventy feet from the lake. If you include the deck, it's sixty-four.
Well, it gets you out of that floodplain. Right, Jerry?
Are you asking me if it does?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, I think, I think if you, if you look, go back to this drawing.
Right, yeah, I'm looking at it.
You can, you can see the jagged lines.
Right.
That run across that piece of property. That is the floodplain boundaries.
So that.
Those are, and, and those are really something that we want to avoid. Encroachment into.
Okay, there.
So that butts up to it then?
See, here's the, here's the floodplain. Yeah, the double line there.
But that, that building plan there, that is thirty wide, forty deep.
Right. So we, we also, on the next agenda, Jerry, we have a CUP for the room?
If, if in fact, you're going to approve.
It's kind of the same horse, isn't it?
Yeah, they're, they're interrelated. But we have to do one in front of the other.
Okay.
Yeah, generally, generally, if you're not going to approve the variance, that kind of puts the conditional use permit as, is it necessary? Because now the Dolls would have to go back and figure something else out. That's why we put the variance first.
Okay.
I think the, the real question is, are you going to, are you going to approve a accessory structure on this site at X from the, the lake? I think that's, that's a one. Number two then becomes, do you allow guest quarters on the second floor of that accessory structure as a conditional use? The ordinance requires second floors to be a conditional use permit. So that's the second part of it.
Right.
But I think you have to really determine where that's going to be first. And then, or if it's going to be.
With the new survey, to me, you're out of the floodplain, you're only five feet now instead of twenty-five feet closer to the lake, or twenty feet or whatever the number was.
Five feet.
Five feet.
Well, there, there, it minimizes those encroachments. And I think that's, that's a great step forward.
Right.
My, my whole point in my, my review, after I got into the original application, which was a thirty by forty, and it was fifty-seven feet from the, from the.
Right.
Property line. I looked at the survey and I found a building, there is a building envelope here that requires no variances whatsoever.
Right. We wouldn't even be here for that.
If it would have been built within the building envelope, there would be no need for a variance.
Right.
And then you'd be just dealing with a second, with a conditional use for the second floor.
Right. Okay.
We've got to do public input. After we get done with the questions, we'll get from us.
Go ahead.
If I may, if you look at the upper, the upper, the very top, that would be right, right there. That would be visible, the way that it's positioned, if we can get it the thirty by forty, forty by thirty. That would be what people would see from the lake. I think that, and, and when we spent a lot of time with our architect, one of the things that we were trying to accomplish is, rather than people driving by on the lake and seeing, you know, a wall of a garage, I think that it's very important, and I guess that's what I, that's what I tried to express in my initial presentation. It's very, very important to fit in with not only our adjacent, our neighbors, and minimizing the impact to them, but also be attractive. That it would go well with our small cabin next door, that it would look attractive from the lake. And we're not asking that it be, you know, really close to the lake. It's, it's very close to, yeah, it's just a little bit off of, of what is the, the law, so to speak. So that's, that's something, I guess, that's, that's very important here to consider to us.
So Jerry, quick question on a R two. If that was city sewer, fifty feet would be allowed for high water?
OHW, yes.
Right.
If it, if we're on city sewer.
Right. There you go. Look it up, the city sewer.
But there's nothing, there's, there's no city sewer in Oslo, Onamaca, so it's a, it's a mute point.
Could we see the other survey, the, the one on your iPad again, or on your tablet or whatever?
Sure.
You'll need to, you're, you'll need to unlock your iPad, it locked up, so. And then Deb will switch back over to the document cam.
So if we were to approve it, Jerry, how would we know? That this survey would be.
Are you, are you looking at that drawing and saying that's what you would like to approve?
I'm just asking. We're looking at something that we don't have.
Right. You could approve that setback that's on that drawing as an accessory structure at that setback. You could, you could approve a thirty by forty accessory structure at the setback that's on that drawing, which Mr. Doll indicates is seventy feet.
Right. Okay.
Again, as, as Jerry read from the state, from the statute, you can choose to, when it comes to the variance, you as the board of adjustment have the, have the choice to approve whatever you choose. Whether it's what they've asked for, whether there's nothing, if it's something in between, you get to choose what you would approve.
This is different from. From that one there.
Well, that's, that's the one that's thirty, forty that way. That's. That's the one where it's going forty this way, leak, and then thirty, you know?
So just saying it shows on the line. Line goes through it, none of that's, this line right here.
The building envelope.
Yeah, with a dotted line there.
Right.
Any questions, you guys?
I have no questions.
Okay. I guess we're looking for public input. If anybody wants to come forward and, any concerns, questions? Okay. I guess we're looking for any motions?
Actually, you need to close this part of it later.
Okay.
And, and then move to the next one.
Okay. So we're closing the public input. And then I guess we're moving on to.
Action.
An action. So I guess we're looking for any motions?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve twenty-two oh two dash zero four, I guess it is. With the understanding that with the conditions one through ten, with the seventy, if we can add number eleven for seventy feet off of the lake, with the deck not larger than six feet, could we do something like that, Jerry?
Don't work.
Don't work. Now, I see. Now, I see condition six is the guests' quarters cannot exceed seven hundred square feet. Is that what our conditional use?
Your, your conditional uses, we'll, we'll get to the conditional use part of it.
Okay, alright.
As, as part of this, but I think the initial variance is for the, the outside dimensions of the structure and the, the location of the structure on the lot.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's passed. Okay, and then we're moving on to the conditional application for the second story guest quarter. So we're gonna open it to the public. Any questions, concerns? Okay, we'll close that part out, and then the presentation. You guys want to state your name and address, please?
Dave Dahl, three-two-seven-oh-seven, Timber Lane Point.
Okay, then you can just, you wanna get up there and tell us what you wanna do as far as the, the second str, or the second floor?
We would use the space to incorporate two bedrooms, a bath, and a small sitting area with a little kitchenette. Not to exceed.
Well, they're saying seven hundred.
Yeah, not to exceed seven hundred feet.
Okay, I had one question for Jerry, but I can probably look it up too.
Okay. We can go on to Jerry and give us your input on that, please.
Basically, the, the report is kind of a duplicate of the, the first one, except that we're dealing with a conditional use. The ordinance requires that a guest quarters obtain a conditional use for it to be built. The ordinance that addresses guest quarters stipulates that it cannot be more than seven hundred square feet. And it can't, if it's on the second floor of an accessory structure, it can't exceed twenty-five feet in height. Typically, an accessory structure in, in any other neighborhood would only have a fifteen-foot height maximum, but the fact that there's guest quarters included allows that second story to happen at a maximum height of twenty-five feet. It should be noted that the seven hundred square feet is not only a city stipulation, as far as the maximum square footage for a guest quarters, that is also part of state shoreline regulations. So it's something that's enforced uniformly throughout the state for lakeshore, shoreline. I did state that there are some conditions, if you wanted to attach, that potential conditions of approval. Obtain a building permit for the, for the structure and the guest house. Applicants who apply with conditions of the variance citing in the roofing of the principal structure and accessory structure similar to the material and color of the principal structure. Comply with state building code, height not to exceed twenty-five feet. Guest quarters shall not exceed seven hundred feet. Compliance septic system shall be designed and installed to service the property. Gutters to be placed on the building with downspouts being directed as to displace water away from the lake. Lowest floor elevation shall be a minimum twelve-ten. And appropriate landscaping and planting shall be installed to reduce the visibility as viewed from the public waters. That planting and the visibility thing is something that is directly out of the guest quarters section of permits.
So the plan says it's seven hundred and eighty-four square feet. Oh, you would do that, okay, now, alright, so how, well, I guess you just. How do you get eighty-four feet out of there?
I don't know. I'd leave that up to our architect, I guess.
Okay.
Then I'll just add quickly, clarification with the seven hundred square feet. Jerry and I actually recently were looking in, at, looking into where that came from. And that seven hundred square feet, it's, yes, it's in our ordinance, but it actually comes directly out of state statute. It's one of those weird things where, when it comes to land use, that state statute is very specific on. Most of the areas, when it comes to land use, it's local entities, whatever you wanna do, but that's one of those areas, for whatever reason, state statute says seven hundred square foot max.
Okay.
When it, when it is in a shoreline district.
It sounds like it'll do that, so.
Okay.
Public, public input.
We have any public input? Any concerns on the room above the garage? Okay, we'll close that part of the public input. I guess we'll go to official action. Do we have any motions to approve? The second story?
I would move the approval of the application with the addition of the conditions in the city planner's memo.
Okay, and that would be to make sure that's seven hundred square feet, is what we're meaning, okay? Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
You had a question?
No, I'll second it, Teddy.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Motion is approved. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed. Okay, and then we're moving on to short-term rental.
Okay, so this is just a continuation, moving from the discussion that the commission had at your workshop on August thirtieth. After we kind of came out of that discussion, the direction that Jerry and I, what we got from that discussion was to bring back some options for the commission to consider before sending a, and, and then, so you can consider, and then send a formal recommendation onto the city council regarding the issue of zoning and short-term rentals. So what we came out of that meeting, it was really kind of made, four main options. One being maintain and enforce the existing short-term rental zoning regulations, which again, just as a reminder, that means short-term rentals will be allowed by interim use permit in, in the commercial, resort commercial, and R4 districts only. Or option two, amend the zoning code to allow short-term rentals in all areas of the city, so allowing it everywhere, at least, or at least in all residential areas of the city. Option three could be amend the zoning code, allow short-term rentals in certain residential zoning districts, so maybe expanding it from where it's currently is, but not to the whole city. Option four is kind of a, an iteration of option two, which would be adopt an interim ordinance, placing a moratorium on short-term rental zoning regulations from January one, twenty-twenty-three to December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three, with the, for the purpose of studying the impacts of short-term rentals. What this would do, again, would essentially allow short-term rentals, it would put a complete moratorium on them, allow short-term rentals to be licensed anywhere in the city during that period, for that period of one year. So again, again, R, this is a reminder with that, the city's licensing ordinance goes into effect on January first. So on January first, anyone who wants to do a short-term rental can and will have to get a short-term rental license. But come December thirty, January one, twenty-twenty-four, unless any other action is taken, the existing code would go back into place, and any short-term rental that's operating outside of the currently allowed zones would then have to cease operation. And then obviously, there's another, if there's anything else that you as a commission members came up with in the time that, since we've met. So those are kind of the options before you to consider based on the recommend, the discussion that we had last, what, two weeks, two weeks ago? Again, I'll just also reminder of, from what we saw at that workshop, I put up the map of where the current rentals are, which I can, actually, I can probably dig that back up from two weeks ago. There's a couple different ones, we had multiple different maps of where they currently are. But all of that, none of them, I should, none of the existing thirty-seven plus short-term rentals that are licensed by the county are within an approved zone. So no short-term, licensed short-term rentals are in a commercial, resort, commercial, or R4 zone. The majority of them are either in R1 or R2 zones currently. So that is the, that is where we currently are at. So then, I guess I'll turn it back over to the commission, maybe for you to have some discussion. Obviously, there are pros and cons to each one of these options. And at this point, I think the council is just looking for a recommendation from the commission on what you think, of how you think the city should proceed on the zoning of short-term rentals.
So David, can I say, talk?
Yeah.
The Crow Wing County kind of changed some of their bedroom stuff, remember?
So yeah, so I'll, so they're currently, well, they're currently considering it.
Oh, they haven't changed it yet.
They haven't changed it yet, so they've gone out for public comment. They are amending their ordinance, what their ordinance, the primary amendments to their ordinance are changing the, in the jurisdictional language, saying that if a city outlaws short-term rentals entirely, which I guess could be your option five, we didn't put it down there, but it's always an option of just saying no short-term rentals, period. Is if a, if a municipality were to say, no short-term rentals anywhere within our jurisdiction, then the county would not license. So that is something they're putting their, putting, they're considered putting in their ordinance. The other item they're looking at putting in their ordinance is that changing it from four bed, four persons per bedroom to three persons per bedroom, it's an occupancy thing. The council did approve some comments to be sent to the count, to the county. The county is accepting written comment until September twenty-ninth. The council did approve some written comments to be signed by the mayor, and then be sent to the county, and then also did direct me, they'll be holding a public hearing on October eleventh, to then represent them at the public hearing on October eleventh, to share, again, kind of what their concerns are when it comes to the county's ordinance, and their, their primary comments were around the jurisdictional piece. And pretty much their opinion, I think, has been to the last year and a half, since the, or two years since the county adopted the ordinance, is, in short, respect our, respect our jurisdiction.
Seems like the county kind of proved their thing, and now they're kind of.
Yep.
Juggling a little bit.
So, you know, with, with the amendment that they're proposing to the jurisdictional piece, I, 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 how I kind of refer to that as the Ironton Clause. The city of Ironton about two months ago outlawed, or, or said, no more short-term rentals in the city of Ironton effective, I think it was the day after Labor Day, September first. And so the county said, okay, we'll honor that, and that's really where that amendment comes from, is saying, okay, if a, but only if, what their amendment is saying is only if a city says no short-term rentals, period. And then in that situation, the county is saying, we won't license any short-term rentals. But if a city like Breezy Point says, we're only gonna license it in certain areas, the county is gonna say, well, we don't care. It's kind of an all or nothing thing in the view of the county. So that was the main comment the, the council had was.
That's my point, is they're, they're kind of juggling a couple balls in the air, and they may juggle that one out, I'm thinking.
They, they may.
Or they're just being lazy and don't wanna.
They're supposed to do. I, I guess I don't, I won't hold my breath that the, that the county would agree to the city of Breezy Point's, the, the council's request to change their ordinance. To essentially, one of their, in their comments, they're, they pretty much requested that the county, that the county changed their ordinance to state that if a local unit of government, municipality, has a zone, has an ordinance that regulates short-term rentals, that, that council, that, that ordinance has precedent, and that the county essentially won't license. But the county will just say, the city, if you have an ordinance, you get to run short-term rentals, and your municipality will stay out of it. I highly doubt that the county would.
So the last meeting, we had thirty-seven that were licensed, I'm sure that's increased.
That's likely increased, that map, according to their website, they only update that every other month. So that was updated in, I think it was updated in August.
Okay.
So it probably won't get updated again until later this month or early October. And my guess is it's probably increased because just from when we saw in July to the update that they did in August, we went from seventeen to thirty-seven. So my guess is we're probably well over forty at this point.
Those are ones that are registered?
Those are ones that are licensed by Crow, those are ones licensed by Crow Wing County. There's probably others out there that don't have any, don't, aren't licensed by the county, too.
Right.
And the city, again, our, our, our own licensing ordinance will go into effect on January first. And then starting January first, we will, we will take enforcement action against those short-term rentals that don't have a city license. The question gun comes back down to the zoning pieces, there's two different pieces here. There's not having a license, and there's also operating in a non-approved area. So if you're operating in a non-approved area, it doesn't matter if you have a city license or not. We actually won't license you if you're operating in an unapproved area. But the county right now will license you in an unapproved area because they don't pay atten, they won't, they don't go and look at our zoning code and our zoning map and say, well, Breezy Point zoning code, are you an approved area? They just looked at it and go, do you meet our requirements? Yes, here's your license.
So zones one, two, and three, still, you can do it four times a year, can be a week, a month, six month, or, you know, or whatever it may be, that has to be licensed by Crow Wing County and the city currently?
I don't believe four ti, the intent of the city's ordinance is not to have to license somebody that's doing four times, or less. I think the intent is anybody that's over four, four would be licensed as a short-term rental.
So you could go four, three weeks?
Yeah, or if, you know, I use the example, if someone wanted to take advantage of race weekend and rent their house out for the weekend. I think the intent is that we wouldn't make you get a, a license for the one weekend. But again, as Jerry said, if you're gonna be doing this every weekend, or you're buying a property for the pure purpose of it being a short-term rental, then yes, you would have to be licensed by both the county and the city. So then again, it comes back down to, again, the zoning question really of, do we maintain, where a current ordinance is saying you only can be in the R4 commercial, resort commercial, with an interim use permit? And then take enforcement action against anyone who is outside of that, whether they have a county permit or not? You know, look at amending the ordinance to allow, you know, maybe opening up the zones, but not the entire city. Allowing it throughout the entire city, just right off the bat, and just say, we're just changing the ordinance, it's wherever you want to be. Or do you wanna do the interim ordinance route? The interim ordinance route, again, that, there's that option. The interim, again, that there's that option, as we've said, the, you know. The fallback of the interim ordinance out op is kind of. It does allow us to see the impact, but then again, it's now you're opening it up for everyone to be in this, in throughout the city, and then if the city decides. The council decides a year from now, the planning commission a year from now going, actually, we didn't like this, then we have to do enforcement and try to shut everyone back down.
Like was said, it's trying to put that cat back in the bag.
Yeah, that cat in the bag would be.
The head is halfway out already, but I mean.
And then again, the other option that isn't on here is there is the option of just saying no short-term rentals, period.
Can I throw out another fifth option or sixth? So at our workshop, it seemed like. It was the noise complaints that were kind of the the biggest issue and not using city resources to go deal with. The noise complaints. What if we wrote in there that any short-term rentals would have to have a management company? So that way they have to deal with the noise complaints, we don't have to send our city there. And when you're approving. Short-term rentals, you ask, you know, who's your management company, you call them up, are you managing this property at X Y Z? Whatever the address is, yes, we are, okay, we can give them their, their. Their license and move forward, that way we're not wasting anybody's. Anybody's or the city's, the police's time dealing with. Noise or any other petty issues that come with short-term rentals. I think it would behoove us to keep short-term rentals. It's non-tax income for the city and revenue for the licenses.
I think the revenue you get from the license barely covers the cost of licensing it.
Then we should, I think, then possibly look into what it costs, you know?
I don't think you do it for the revenue. If you do, then it's not the right thing to do, I don't think, but.
So, if I can make a couple of comments, Lee. So one on that, so the kind of ordinance, the licensing ordinance is written, it does not require a, someone to have a property management company. But it does require that they have twenty-four seven, like twenty-four-hour contact when someone's renting it. So whether it's the, and that they be able to be, be able to respond within an hour, so the intent there is. If you live, own the property, but don't live in the twin cities, obviously, you're without, out, you're outside of an hour. You're going to have to have someone, be it a, a company or some kind of local agent. To act on your behalf, so you have, so that is a requirement that you have be able to, when it's being prop, when it's being occu- occupied. That you be in, have twenty-four-hour contact, be it yourself or or an agent. So we are, we do have that requirement. I guess I would go, I I wouldn't necessarily recommend doing the agent requirement only because there will be people where it's like they live in the house. You know, or they live in the city and kind of, well, I don't want to need a property management company. As for the revenue piece, it's still something we're look, I'm, I'm, I'm finalizing, my intention would bring it to the city council at the same time, this would go in October. And what we're balancing with that is looking at what other people charge, is it's a balance of. You want to have it, do want to have it high enough to cover costs, you know, administrative costs of administering the permits. You know, doing inspections and things like that, but you also don't want to have it too high to to the point where people just say it's not worth it. To come and get the license.
They won't even license, they'll just do it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll go, you know, the fine is, you know, two fines is less than one permit, and that's what we don't want either. We don't want the fines, obviously, we want fines to hurt, we don't want, which we're also going to be having the council adopt. But we want the licenses to cover our costs, but not be so high that no one gets the license.
So. Referring to what Teddy was mentioning there. So right now, if, let's say a neighbor calls. I mean. I can't remember what was set up, do they call this, is there a number to call to see?
So right now, how it's, how the, how the ordinance has been written and approved. Is they will, if you have a short-term rental. The city will have the contact information and will actually have it posted, but then the neighbors will also have that contact number. So if there's a concern, they can call that, and we would say, call that, encourage you to call the number first. Granted, if it is a noise complaint, you know, call that number and then we say, and then hang up after you call that number and then always, you know, it's a noise complaint, go ahead and call the PD. The PD is willing to respond, they enforce our noise, ordinance and noise complaints. The benefit of doing that is in case the property management company does not respond, or the, or the property owner, whoever the agent, owner or agent does not respond. To the complaint. We have a documentation that there actually was a violation going on. Because without any documentation, if someone says there's a, has said there was a party on Saturday night. But doesn't call the city until Monday, it has no documentation, no police report, or doesn't have video or something of that there was a. Party going on, it was super loud. Well, I can, well, our intent would be, we would send a letter to the property owner, inform the property owner, hey, we got a complaint. But we can't take enforcement action against it because we have no actual proof. We can't verify that complaint. So we, we can let them know, by the way, you got a complaint, but it doesn't count as one of the strikes against your license.
Can you reiterate how many you've had this year, complaints?
One. And actually, that complaint. If I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, wasn't necessarily that they were allowed, it was just more of their renting. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so it wasn't even a complaint that they were having a loud party or anything, it was more of just, we see people coming, different people every weekend.
Is it possible, maybe? You could maybe send something out to. I mean, like neighbors that are, I don't know how far you'd want to go out, but. Let's say the neighbors on each side of them or however it may be, is it possible to reach out to them and just send something and say, hey, there's a. You know, the short-term rental next to you. Here's the number that you can call.
No, that's the ordinance is required.
Okay.
It's required that the neighbors would receive that information.
Okay, so they do get it, okay, so there's no problem, people not knowing to call or?
Correct, so everyone would be, if a, if a license is issued, the neighbors, the immediate neighbors would be notified and receive that contact information.
Seems like we're changing the rules for these forty, fifty people that are in a city that says, I wrote down thirteen hundred households. It's kind of like changing the speed limit to forty because everybody's driving forty, but the rest of us are driving. Thirty-eight or whatever. I don't know, that's just.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I, I would like to read a short statement from our comprehensive plan. This is how an individual responded to our community survey. They said the biggest draw to living in Breezy Point is a beautiful natural area. The rural up north feel and all of the outdoor recreation. And safe, quiet neighborhoods are the most important qualities to protect and treasure. I believe that expanding short-term rentals to residential zones will have a negative impact on the quality of life in our community. In my opinion, our new short-term rental ordinance will be difficult to enforce. To be acted on, complaints will need to be substantiated. That will be difficult to do, especially when it comes to noise complaints. We should not expand short-term rentals beyond where they are currently allowed.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we are at an hour, to recommend we take a quick break so that can restart the.
Okay, we'll take a quick break. Restart.